Meeting for October 7, 2014. Call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's absent.
Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Martin, absent. Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
I'm President Wallace.
Here. And trustee Martin will be right in, so we'll go ahead and please stand for the invocation.
Thank you, let's pray. Father, thank you for the blessing of beautiful weather, beautiful friends, a community to serve and lead. I thank you for these leaders. God remind us that the ultimate authority is yours. Give us wisdom and clarity to lead and serve well. God, thank you for the blessings that we have many off on which we are completely unaware of. God make us more aware of your presence and your goodness among us. Thank you for this opportunity and this time. I may pray in your name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Simkins.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
You hear that sound and everybody checks their phones. Moving along on the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the board members still request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at appropriate time and agenda. At this point, is there anything on the consent that anyone would like to remove or add?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to add, under planning and zoning, A1 postumia special use, outdoor seating and live entertainment to the consent agenda.
Does anybody have any questions about that? Trustee Shipman, did you want to talk about that one, or? We can, I can leave it out.
No, I was saying, no, that's fine.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include postumia special use outdoor seating and live entertainment. Brewster Creek Tiff Developer Note Number Three payout request. Liquor control ordinance amendment Walgreens Class H. BAPS fireworks daily or display permit request. BAPS amplifier permit request.
So moved.
Second. It's moved by trustee Shipman, seconded by trustee Martin. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Cammerer, seconded by trustee Ranky for the amended consent agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
The motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening is the treasures report. Mr. Martin Noaks.
Thank you Mayor. I'll start out this evening with the sales tax report for fiscal year to date through July 2014. Fiscal year-to-date revenue is $569,499 and it represents a 1.32% increase over the same time period last year. Moving on to the motor fuel tax allotment report through August 2014 of this fiscal year. Fiscal year-to-date revenue is $337,849. We did receive our fifth and last installment of the jobs now growth, the jobs now capital bill for $179,796. We're still waiting on our high-growth allotment, so the total actually would be $517,664 and that represents an 11.5% decrease over the same time period last year. So, once we get in our high-growth allotment, which I expect we would receive, we'll be right on track with our budget.
Thank you, Mr. Martin Noaks. Next item we have on the agenda is the president's report. The first item. Sir, 2014 Pride and Ownership boards. Village Parkers, please recognize, under 2014 Pride and Ownership boards, Pride and Ownership programs started in Bartlett in 1996 to recognize owners who do an outstanding job maintaining their property. The village calls out for nominees at the beginning of the summer and the volunteer judges visit all nominated properties evaluating them on general appearance, landscaping, curb appeal and creativity. Just here we have three single-family winners, one multifamily winner and two commercial winners. So if you want a present, you can step on top of me and call your name. First place, single-family winner is Mr. Jerry Hamlin at 1-2-3 East McClellan Street. Next on the list, second place is Mr. Mr. Tenny Hunt at 612 Winchester Court. Third place is Nancy Dunberg.
At 917 Doral Court.
Thank you.
And for the multi-family home, we have one winner, Mr. and Mrs. Roberto Roberts-Panado, 103A Daniel Court. Not present, we will mail that to him. We have two commercial winners this evening for the Pride and Ownership. Second place was Greco &amp; Sons at 1550 Heck Drive. Is there anybody here from Greco &amp; Sons? We will mail that to the Greco &amp; Sons. And first place is the Durango Family Dental, 104 South Oak Avenue. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. The first proclamation I'll be reading is the Illinois Arts and Humanities Month proclamation, October 2014. I believe Rita is here, yes. Whereas during the month of October, AH exclamation point month activities will be held across the state, bringing people together to engage with arts and humanities such as musical performances, exhibits, lecture series, films, screenings, poetry readings and more. And whereas the arts and humanities are the embodiment of all things beautiful and entertaining in the world, the enduring record of human achievement, and whereas the arts and humanities enhance every aspect of life in the Village of Bartlett, improving our economy, enriching our civic life, driving tourism and exerting a profound positive influence on the education of our children. And whereas the arts and humanities play a valuable role in the lives of our families, our communities and our state, and whereas the Village of Bartlett thanks those who are involved in the arts and humanities, especially the arts in Bartlett, for being an integral part, a community partner and resource for special events and community enrichment. And now therefore I, Kevin Wallace, President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage and Kane Counties, Illinois, hereby proclaim October as Illinois Arts and Humanities Month in DuPage County and urge all citizens to support Illinois Arts and Humanities.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that's a completely brand-new location in case you aren't aware, I don't think our sign's up yet, but the former, is it? Oh, I didn't say it myself. The former Black Pie Salon, we are there now, practically across the street from here. It's twice the size of our former location. We have six studios, some of the artists were here tonight, Cecilia Gray who manages our Center for the Arts, and we invite all of you to come by. We're open, where are our days? Thursday, Friday and Saturday, and it's pretty exciting, so thanks for your support.
Thank you Rita. Next we have a proclamation for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas violence against women and children continues to become more a prevalent problem, and whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group of people, but cross all economic, gender, racial and societal barriers and are supported by societal indifference. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security and humanity through the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting families and society as a whole. And whereas local educational information and resources are available by visiting www-endedallabuse.org website, and whereas it is fitting to set aside a special time to bring this issue to the attention of all residents of the Village of Bartlett so they can become better informed and involved in programs to eliminate this epidemic from our society. And now therefore I, Kevin Wallace, Village President of the Village of Bartlett, Cook, DuPage and Kane Counties, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage our residents to join forces with the victims' service programs, criminal justice officials and concerned citizens across the country to raise the public awareness of domestic violence issues. And I believe we have Grace Gates to accept the proclamation.
Yes. Thank you all for doing this. I continue the Alliance of Centers of Human Rights and Alliance to promote the use of human rights classes on a monthly basis to raise awareness of the issue of domestic violence in our community and in District 3 of the Riddick Courthouse, so thank you for doing this, I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. It's really good to see you. Next item on our agenda is questions and answers. Are there any questions from the board at this point? Hearing none, we'll move on to the town hall portion of the meeting. At this portion of the meeting, we invite those that are interested in discussing anything with the board to step up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record and kindly keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Anybody to like to address the board at this time?
Joan Pleis, 128 South Hickory Avenue. I just, on behalf of the Bartlett Historical Society, wanted to thank the village staff for your assistance in allowing us to do the cemetery walk. And special thanks also to the Bartlett Hills Golf Club for helping us by providing carts that people that were handicapped would be able to utilize to get to the sites on the cemetery. And also, we wanted to thank in particular the Village of Bartlett's Public Works Department also because they've always been helpful with us in locating graves and who was buried there. So it was a very successful program. We had 52 adults and one child attend and they enjoyed it, so thank you.
Thank you Mrs. Pleis. Go ahead and step up to the.
Nayan Mehta, I'm a resident of Bartlett at 135 Troutman Drive. Today I'm here as a director of outreach from BAPS Swaminara in Mandir, that's on Route 59. And to this month being an Indian New Year celebrations that we're going to be having at BAPS, today I would like to invite, make an public announcement to invite everyone, every resident, every table to visit this Monday during especially the open to all the fires, fireworks that we are going to have on Saturday, that's going to be in October 18. This firework is at 7:00, but everybody's encouraged to come a little early for the arrangement of parking and then take the seats. It's an outdoor event for about half an hour from 7:00 to 7:30. So all are encouraged and most welcome to visit this wonderful celebration of fireworks. And we thank you for the, to the Village of Bartlett and the all-staff members and the police department and the other, all the departments that's been helping us, cooperating with us to make this event a great success every year. Thank you, once again.
Thank you, Nayan.
Hi, good evening. I'm back again. My name is Grace Gates and I live at 735 Sterling Court and I've been a resident of Bartlett since 1977. And I'm here tonight to ask your help in eliminating the trucks that come through Bartlett. And I'm referring to the Mack granite trucks, or I say dump trucks. And they're coming from the quarry, over 59, down Stearns to Bartlett Road, down Devon, Ontarioville Road to the Elgin-O'Hare. And they're cutting through town and we don't like that. They're loud, they're going through residential areas, they're congesting traffic and not to mention what they're doing to the roads. When they're loaded, they weigh 23 to 36 tons. I got that number from the Illinois State Police. And when I drive to work, I take that route to the Elgin-O'Hare down Ontarioville Road. And one morning I was looking at the sign that said Ontarioville Road and a light bulb went off in my head, so I called the Village of Hanover Park and I asked if that was village-owned or county-owned because the three that I'm referring to are county-owned. And they said it was village-owned. And I said, well, how much is your weight limit? And they said, we don't have one. And I said, when is your next board meeting? So I went and asked them if they could put a weight limit on that road that would eliminate the trucks from going through Bartlett. I did talk to some of the people that live on Stearns Road and everyone is not happy with the truck traffic. It's really loud and bad. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about or witnessed them coming through town. So I did, I followed up with a letter to Mayor Craig and Chief Dan Webb about the traffic. They told me they're working on configuring, or reconfiguring Ontarioville Road to become a new downtown and working with IDOT and would keep me apprised of their meetings with IDOT on that. But I said, in the interim, could you please do a weight limit? And then I did further research and I found out that the village could restrict the truck traffic going through town. And it's a municipal code that I have a copy of. I called Senator Oberweis's office in Springfield and they said that you have the authority to regulate vehicles conveying loads within the municipality. It's a statute. A municipal code, I have that here. So I'm asking your help if you could kindly do that, it would mean a lot to these people. They start, I hear them before 5:00 AM and they go all day to 5:30 PM. So whatever you could do would be really appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, can you, can you address that at all for us?
Well, she's absolutely correct. Those are county roads. It's a designated truck route through the county and therefore they're actually invited to utilize it. It's actually a designated truck route for DuPage County. To exasperate that, there's, there's an expansion of the Elgin-O'Hare and therefore they're utilizing a tremendous amount of our resources from our quarries. So I wish I had better news, but absent legislation and changing of designations, we're left kind of hamstrung. That being said, we're aware of the complaint. My officers are also very aware of it. There is a noticeably heightened level of trucks on those roads. That being said, we can, we monitor them, we make sure that they're not overweight or that they're posing a hazard other than the fact that they're trucks on local roads. But her concerns are valid, but she also accurately stated the dilemma.
Chief, is the, is South Bartlett Road also a county road as well?
That part is also county and it's also designated a truck route.
Where does the village take ownership of those, of those roads at any point?
Well, we've locked down our roads. There is, the roads that we do have authority over, the board's done a very aggressive and effective job at keeping trucks off them and we, and we enforce that. Now, you have an occasional violator, but mostly we've gotten cooperation from the companies that would otherwise use those roads and we've really seen a tremendous impact positively on our roads.
Because I also take that, I take Stearns to my office and every day, there's two or three trucks coming right down in front of me and so.
It's marketedly increased truck traffic, you're correct.
And there's no room on the roads for them. I mean, it's, it's a space issue because I was, last week I was at Bartlett and Newport de Bonn and the truck was turning right to make in, to head east and there was just no room in the intersection for it.
There is a new traffic engineer at DuPage County that's very helpful, so maybe we can talk to him about.
Yeah, I was just going to say, maybe we can go to the county and talk about the issue and see if there aren't some areas in there where they would think about some weight prohibitions and at least try to control the truck traffic somewhat.
I have one more question. I don't understand why they're not taking 59 to 20. The difference is Florida has just borrowed this four and a half miles and they take 59 to 20, it's six and a half miles. So there's, it's two and a half miles that they're saving or two miles that they're saving because I think they're getting paid by the, with the carry. I don't know why, so why would they do it? So why are they taking 59 to 20 to help them there?
Well, why don't we, why don't we just, why don't we get a statement from DuPage County to see if they have any options?
I beg your pardon?
Let's get, let's ask the traffic and traffic control gentleman that we have a relationship with, if we can get a statement if there are any options because it's increasingly being a problem in our, in our town. Thank you for bringing it up.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Do we know how late they go? I, I see them in the morning and I leave 6:30 sometimes, so, but do we, do they go till 7:00? Do they go till 9:00?
They have gone later into the evening, but not as a rule. Mostly it's early morning through the business hours.
Maybe early morning, we make them go up to Lake and after a certain time when everyone's up, then they go through town. That's a thought.
We can call DuPage County.
It doesn't wake people up. And it doesn't, doesn't, our morning commute after 9:00 or whatever, it's a thought.
Thank you.
Those guys aren't good on gas mileage.
Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Ms. Pleis?
I was wondering what the requirements are for the waste disposal trucks that come through for picking up garbage for commercial on a daily basis? Because they start about 5:10 AM and they're rather noisy. I don't know what their timeframe is allowed to be.
I was told the residential is not supposed to start until 7:00, but I don't know about commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Your, your timing is good, Mrs. Pleis. We were just talking about this today at a staff meeting because we have had more frequent complaints about mainly the commercial carriers. Now, they don't have a time designation and so we're, there really aren't too many of them in town and so we were going to contact them, try to get them to come at 7:00 and if they don't, we'll bring a proposal to the board that just restricts it to 7:00.
Because I hear one.
Apparently recently it's gotten worse.
Yes, it has.
Yeah, that's something very, that's, I've actually brought that up to them before. Personal experience, getting out there at 7:00 or 6:55 when they're supposed to be there at 7:00 and then I gotta call them back up and then they gotta come back out and get my stuff. So we'll look into it and see if we can push that on. I know that they give the drivers somewhat of leeway, so I think some of the drivers, they kind of set their own hours, but it's not fair to residents, so.
Right.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to our standing committee reports. First standing committee reporter is under Planning and Zoning Committee, Chairman Cammerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. All things under Planning and Zoning under the consent agenda for this evening.
Thank you Chairman Cammerer. Next item on understanding committee reports is Building Committee, Chairman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us, the 2014-2015 budget includes the replacement of one building vehicle. We received the information regarding the purchase of a 2015 Ford Fusion Hybrid through the State of Illinois Joint Purchase Program. We're buying it from Wright Automotive of Hillsborough, Illinois. The car is costing us $23,918 and we were allotted $25,000 in our budget, so we are saving some. And we're replacing 2006 Ford Taurus, which is in need of major repairs, and this will be the fifth, fifth hybrid in our fleet. I make a motion to authorize the village to purchase one 2015 Ford Fusion Hybrid from Wright Automotive Incorporated Hillsborough, from Hillsborough, Illinois for $2,918.
$23,000.
Oh, sorry. $23,918.
Second. It's moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Shipman. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes. That motion carries.
And that's all I have for my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you Chairman Martin. Next on the agenda is Finance and Golf Committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item on finance and golf tonight was taken care of during the consent agenda.
Thank you Chairman Ranky. Next item on our agenda this evening is License and Ordnance Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing further to add, all three items on my agenda were covered under the consent.
Thank you Chairman Carbonaro. Next item on the agenda is Police and Health Committee, Chairman Shipman.
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you Chairman Shipman. Next item on our agenda is Public Works Committee, Chairman Aaron's who's absent. That's Aaron, trustee Ranky, take her spot on this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight on the Public Works Committee agenda, we have three items. First item, Bartlett Hills Kart Path Replacement Project bids. So with that, I'll turn this over to Mr. Dingus.
Thank you trustee Ranky. The Bartlett Hills Kart Path is just maintenance on the kart path. We're actually filling in areas where there's currently gravel with asphalt and then repairing bad sections. We actually had the, the bids came in a little bit higher than our budget, so we're just reducing the quantity to meet our budget.
Can you explain how you're reducing the quantity?
Well, if we had like a thousand feet of path, we're reducing it down to 900 to make it work with the budget.
It was a unit price bid, so we do the exact bid, so we didn't change that. So we had the ability to go to the contractor and cut back on the quantity and then stay within budget.
So on number 12, we don't have to drive over plywood after this?
Well, we might still have, we're gonna put, we're gonna have stone down there.
Better plywood.
Dan, just a question, just out of curiosity. Are there times with the public works that we actually would do asphalt our own, in-house, so to speak?
Yes, we have a paving machine that we've been getting up to speed on, so there will be an opportunity, hopefully in the future, that we can do some of that work ourselves. Right now, I don't know that we're ready for that out in the golf course, but hopefully in the future, we'll be able to do that.
It just seems to me that if we were to spend $80,000 on some of our own equipment and do it ourselves, we might be able to maintain things a little better and have the, have it in-house.
We're getting better, so hopefully we'll be able to get there.
Good.
Any other questions? Okay, I move the 2014 golf course path replacement project be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, A Lamp Concrete Contractors, Inc. of Schaumburg, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $64,930 in the passage of Resolution 2014-77? 77?
Second. It's moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Shipman. Is there any additional discussion?
I do have a question or two.
Okay.
So, based on the fact that this is beyond our original budget, we're going to scale back the project.
back the project? I'm just a little, I guess I'm just a little concerned about that, what, why are, what do we do about the rest of the project, then, is that something we're just gonna be able to do next year, or?
Yeah, we would add it on to next year's project, we're also looking at the possibility, can our crews get in there and do it, probably not this year, but maybe in the spring, so we're trying to look at those, we're also gonna patch the worst areas, so we'll be able to get by, but then, I, I mean, there's more to be done, so next year's budget, we'll do additional kart path.
Okay. Anything? Hearing none, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Camer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item on Public Works is item number two, Schick Road Bike Path Extension Project bids, again, I'll turn this over to Mr. Dinges.
Thank you, this is completing the bike connection from where the township installed the bike path on Schick Road to cross Route 59 and connect it up to the Woodland Hills area, so this just fills that gap. And we had to get an easement, which we, you guys, the board previously approved, and so we're ready to go, and we've got bids, and the bids came out pretty well, so we're ready to get it built.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Well, this one's over too, so we're not gonna put plywood over here, are we?
No, no plywood.
Okay, I move the Schick Road Bike Path Extension Project be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, A Lamp Concrete Contractors, Inc. of Schaumburg, Illinois, in the estimated amount of $33,346.25 in the passage of Resolution 2014-78.
Second. It's moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Camer, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Camer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you, third and final item on Public Works is the Heron's Landing Pond Liner Project Bid, rejection, so once again, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director.
This one unfortunately didn't work out as we had planned, as you can see, the bids came in much higher than we anticipated, we talked to the contractor, and the main concern is the dewatering, in order to install the liner, they have to de-water it and kept it, keep it dewatered until that liner is backfilled, otherwise it can float up, and they were really nervous about that, so that's why we've got a number of $500,000 for that. The budget doesn't have that, we're looking at other options with our consultant, and then we'll be sitting down with the homeowners association to find out if these other alternatives would be acceptable.
That's a substantial overrun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The dewatering was the majority of it.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I move the village board reject all bids submitted for the 2014 Heron's Landing Detention Pond Liner Project.
Second. It's moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Shipman, is there any additional discussion?
Is there any possibility that this pond, I mean, obviously it has to be a water-retaining pond, it can't be a dry pond?
Well, that's some of the, right now, the issue that we have is, it's not holding at the design elevation, because it's got a leak in it.
Right.
And so it's, it's found its comfortable spot, and that's something where we're gonna talk to the homeowners association to find out, can we leave it there and do some restoration along the shoreline to enhance that, that's one option. Another option that we're working with the consultant is to do a two-level pond, one where it would be deeper, and the other section would be a drier pond, so, those are a couple of options that we're looking at, cost-wise, we think that'll bring the numbers down to where we can afford with the budget that we have available.
There's a little history with this one, this was Reeland Homes, which was taken over by Orleans, Orleans went bankrupt, the surety bond amount was an estimate from an engineer, that this is what it would cost, we made a claim on the surety, hit the bankruptcy builder, through a reorganization, was released from liability on this, the surety company paid the full 100% of the penal amount on the bond, which is this $323,000, obviously the engineer's estimate is not, you know, accurate, or did not take into account sort of this dewatering, but part of that is you have one bidder, and then apparently they're all of nervous, so, what's happening is, it's actually supposed to be a wet bottom, and so some of the people thought we should be looking at a wet-bottom pond, but as Dan pointed out in his memo, you're getting some wetland plantings, and that may be an enhancement of that type of pond, or as Dan mentioned, the two ponds may be the alternative, and redesign it, use the 323, which is what the surety company paid us some time ago, so, gonna try and redesign it.
And that, that money's in hand.
Cash is in hand, it's not a bond, it's...
It's not a grant, it's gonna expire.
No, we sued them and received the full amount, or threatened.
We had to sue them?
No, threatened to sue, that, we got close.
Okay, okay.
Here there's no recourse because of the error?
It's not even necessarily an error, but, you know, obviously you see those...
Wouldn't it be an error on the bonding company?
No, the bonding company's obligation under a surety bond is to pay, you know, a set, a top...
They have to have a risk assessor.
Well, the risk assessor where you could go after would be the, the builder who's discharged in bankruptcy.
And there's nothing...
The surety, they have a penal sum on the bond, and they can either pay that, or they can take the risk and do the work, and they decided to pay the amount.
I learned a new word, dewatering. Did you move?
I, I did move.
Is there any other discussion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Camer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes, no, and rejection.
This is to reject it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, to reject.
Yes, to reject.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes, again?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries to reject.
Okay.
To reject.
Thank you, trustee, thank you for stepping in for Chairman Aaron. Next item on our agenda is new business, does anyone have any new business for the good of the order?
A comment?
Um, next, next item on the agenda is questions and answers, Mr. Martin.
Seems there was an incident out at Brewster Creek, not to go into details, but I was told after talking to a few people that the police did exactly as they were trained, and worked well with other agencies, and that's always good to hear.
Any other questions from the staff? Do we have any answers? We'll move right into the committee of the whole meeting, that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Camer, seconded by trustee Shipman, the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Camer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?